Board of Aldermen, order on Tuesday, December 8th, 2020 at 7:30 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by city clerk, who is covering, and Alderman Kelly will lead us in the pledge to flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website, the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 874-2145-6400. The passcode is 257397. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov, and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Nashville Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I am present. I am alone and practicing social distancing.
Alderman Clea. Alderwoman Kelly.
Here, I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'm present. I can hear everyone and I'm practicing social distancing.
Alderman Karen.
I am here. I am alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I am alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tanza.
I'm present. I am alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone, but my husband may be walking through and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am here and I am alone in the room.
Alderman Lars.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear you.
Alderman Cleaver.
My daughter's in an adjacent room and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I'm present and I can hear everyone and I'm in this room alone.
Alderman Wulcher.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
You have 13 in the 10.
Madam President, if I may, I did receive a call from Alderman Clea. She's hoping if all goes well to join us shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. I also heard from Alderman Lopez that he had a crisis to deal with at work, so he may be joining us soon. Also with us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, I first wanted to update you on the COVID-19 situation as I want to do when we get together. As the doctors and scientists predicted, and told us from the beginning, the COVID-19 virus is spreading much more rapidly now as the weather turns colder. Of course, we've seen gatherings move inside, which accelerates the spread of the disease. And here in Nashville, we're seeing the same phenomenon and we've seen it in New Hampshire and, of course, around the country. I have to say that transmission in Nashville is substantial, much, much higher than it was in the summer, in the two or three months ago. Right now, we have 521 active cases that have been identified as having tested positive for COVID-19. 341 new cases in the past week, so that is about 35 cases a day. We have about 35 people, 35 people in our two hospitals with COVID-19. Their capacity is certainly greater than that, but, and that's good. The number, though, for in the summertime was in the single number, so you can see that the number of people hospitalized is way up. Our positivity rate, meaning the number of percentage of people who get tested for COVID-19, who come up positive, is around 10%, a little bit above 10%. Now that, you know, was down in the summertime around 1%. So again, all of this, all of these facts show us that the disease is spreading much more than we had a few months ago. So the lesson here, Madam President, is that people need to continue to be cautious, follow the science, and be careful. We know that the vaccine is coming pretty soon. We have a, we have a very good, and I'm very proud of everything that's been done in the community here in Nashville to keep people safe. Everyone is wearing masks. We have a mask ordinance. But of course, even, even the measures we've taken can't prevent the spread of the virus. They only, they only limit it. So as we head into the holiday season, it's important for people to try to stay socially distanced. It is very hard not to get together with family and friends. That's really, really difficult. But the safest thing is to stay at home. If you do get together with others, please stay in small group, you know, make it small gatherings. Try to wear your masks even inside. We do know, and there's certainly anecdotes out there showing that people have caught the disease from Thanksgiving gatherings right here in Nashville. So wear your mask, wash your hands, be careful, and let's, together, let's continue to keep the community safe. Get through the holiday season, get through the winter, and the vaccine will be coming. One member of the board asked me to talk about the priority once the vaccine gets here. There is a state determined priority list. The first people on that list are healthcare workers who deal directly with COVID-19 patients. Then succeeding them, there are people who reside in nursing homes or congregate care facilities. Police and fire, first responders are shortly thereafter. So there is a definite priority list that the state is planning and mandating in terms of the way the vaccine will be rolled out when it does get here. Hospitals are ready, and so we're just looking forward to the day when most, when people are vaccinated and are hopefully immune from the disease. But Madam President, I did want to talk about one of the items on the agenda tonight, which is my veto of parts of the firefighters' collective bargaining agreement. And I'm asking the board to sustain my veto of those parts of the contract. As we've discussed, the city is facing unprecedented financial challenges. And those challenges are rapidly rising healthcare costs, up $6.3 million, or about 20% just in two years. Now the COVID-19 pandemic and the extra expenses and unknown future costs that may be caused by the virus. Then a state-imposed $4.4 million increase in pension costs for city employees starting July 1st of next year. And then more news from the state, a $6 million reduction in state school aid, again, starting July 1st, 2021. If anyone has any doubts about next year being a difficult budget year, just focus on the $10 million hit from the state of New Hampshire. $4.4 million in added pension costs and $6 million less in school aid. These state actions, these state actions will cause a 5% increase in property taxes before we even get to the city budget, before we try to pay for any collective bargaining agreements, including the firefighters. The projection the CFO is giving suggests that the tax increase next year could be in the 8% to 9% range, even before the 15% raises in the firefighter's contract. So as I've mentioned before and as we've discussed, the firefighter's contract does increase wages by 15 and a half percent over four years. Now, for the past two years, starting way before the pandemic, I've been saying that in a time when the city is facing major financial challenges, and at that point, when I began, we were really talking about healthcare costs, I said wages should be limited to a level much closer to the cost of living. Certainly, Madam President, I am mindful and appreciative of the outstanding service that the firefighters and Nashville Fire Rescue provide to our great city, but I am accountable to the Nashville, to all Nashville residents and taxpayers. In doing so, I must support contracts which are fair, which are fair, but fair to both our employees and to our taxpayers. I believe that Nashville is treating our firefighters fairly. On the issue of pay, I can assure you that Nashville pays our firefighters well, even before the raises in this contract. I am concerned that the approval of this contract by the board, along with some other actions that I have expressed concern about or opposed or even vetoed, will inevitably lead to budgets for city departments that we cannot sustain or afford. I am concerned that these actions will lead to reduced services or layoffs or much higher taxes. Now, I vetoed certain sections of the firefighter's contract because they increase. They increase city healthcare costs when the city is undertaking a citywide plan to reduce the rapidly rising costs of healthcare. This contract goes in the other direction. For two years now, the city has been facing rapidly rising healthcare costs, up $6 million, as I said, over just two budgets. These rising costs are a serious financial challenge, but it's a challenge that we believe we can solve. The city has developed a plan to reduce costs and to reduce the rate of increase of healthcare costs in the future. However, the firefighter's contract does not meet this plan. It is my responsibility as mayor and to our Nashville taxpayers, our hard-working taxpayers, to keep the tax burden as low as possible and to make sure that people get the services they need. Our healthcare plan, the reform that we have put forward, will help do that. But it will only work if every city employee participates. No exceptions, no excuses. The reform the city is seeking raises deductibles for drugs and some services for HMO participants. This reform saves money for employees by reducing the deduction in their weekly paychecks by as much as $80 a week for a family plan or a two-person plan. So far, the city's cost-saving plan has been put into effect or agreed to for six groups of city employees, including unaffiliated employees in City Hall and the City Public Health and Community Services Division, including the communication workers in the Police Department, including two groups of the UAW, of UAW employees in City Hall, the Fire Department, and Public Works, and including employees in the library. Now, the firefighter's contract does not include the city's cost savings reforms for healthcare. Instead, the provisions I have vetoed in the firefighter's contract would pay the firefighters approximately $197,000 in additional wages for every year forever, for marginal and possibly only temporary increases in the use of an option that is already available to them and to all city employees, the so-called medical savings or high deductible plan. The city already pays any employee who elects this medical savings or high deductible plan, a two-person or family version, already pays that employee $3,000 per year, every year, to elect the plan. And that employee then has a $4,000 deductible. If the employee does not use the $3,000 for healthcare costs by the end of the year, any remaining funds from the $3,000 carried, paid by the city, are carried over to the next year in that employee's medical savings account. And for the firefighters, we would pay, under this contract, the $3,000 plus another $197,000. It is unfair to other employees, unfair to taxpayers, I believe, and there is no reason the city should pay one group of city employees, that is, the firefighters, more than the $3,000 per person to elect the medical savings or high deductible plan. Therefore, I am asking the Board of Aldermen to reconsider, reconsider only the sections of the contract that I have vetoed. If we work together on healthcare costs, we can greatly reduce the costs to our residents and to our taxpayers. And that is all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Any responses to the remarks of Mayor? Seeing none? Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Special Board of Aldermen meeting and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of November 24th, 2020, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public, from Mayor Jim Donches, regarding veto message, regarding line item veto of provisions of R 2088, which increased city healthcare costs, and from Dorothy Clark, Deputy Corporation Counsel, regarding R 2098 and R 2099, correction to proposed collective bargaining agreements for the UAW clerical, technical, and professional units.
Thank you. There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. I see Mr. Davidson. Name an address for the record, please.
I'm sorry. Yes, Donald Davidson, present address, 1833 Flynn Circle, The Villages, Florida, Nashville address, for Henry David Drive in Nashville. I am, I'm rising to support the contract that is again up before you tonight, the firefighter's contract. First, a little comment about my personal situation. In September this year, my family and I chose to make a very momentous decision, and that was to withdraw from all of my activity, which included having to step down from the Fire Department, which I deeply regretted, but because of my health, it was demanded that I do something. In addition to that, since my whole life, I've always wanted to become a resident of The Villages down here. I realized that waiting for tomorrow was taking too long, that tomorrow was today. So combining the two, I reluctantly stepped down from the Fire Department, which I probably never will in heart, and then do what was necessary for my health. I've continuously followed the, the contract situation as much as I can from being a fire because of my concern to get a decent solution for the Fire Department. I'm here tonight for total support of that issue. This contract, as many of you know, has been involved in contractual meetings since April of 2019, as the contract officially expired in July of 2019. It is my view that this final edition of the contract is perhaps the most collaborative to union management contract in a very long time in the city. And I say collaborative because of many of the things that were done during these recent negotiations that are kind of unique, at least in my history of following contracts. I think most of you know that I've felt that the union history at the bargaining table has never been a top priority by the city in past contracts sessions. All you have to do is compare the results of those contracts over the past many years. Yet the NFR, the members of the Nashville Fire Department is still earnestly attempting to keep the taxpayers' ability in mind. The mayor brought up a couple of items that really made me sit back, and of course, not having all of the specific details of this contract before you, I have to pass on it, but I found that his numbers of 15% were, to me, a bit excessive. The bottom line in contracts for taxpayers, what is the yearly cost of the COLAS? We all look at a contract, it was 8% this year, two more percent, not 8%, 2% this year, 2% next, three the following, and closing with one or two. This contract has 10% over four years in COLAS. There are other things in the contract that are in every single contract the city does that, when you put it all together, will raise the total percentage of the contract more than the 10% I just brought up to you. But every contract has it, and it has to do with longevity and all of those things that I just mired in the old system, which personally I wish we could change, but that takes a long time. But in this contract is a unique thing that there's a 10% over the four years with a possible 1% more if the fire, if the union reaches the numbers the city insurance desires over the last two years of the contract. In other words, it has a pay me later provision. When did you ever hear of a union saying they would do that? What they've said to the city, if we can get to the point you want in these insurance numbers, then you'll pay us that percent. If we don't get it, you won't pay it. The mayor also mentioned that the 3,000 option that people have and the high deductible is a pretty nice windfall for employees. I couldn't agree more. What is available to every single employee in the city in Ashwa is not unique to the Fire Department. In my belief, the union is trying to accommodate the city's pleas for insurance help. At the last meeting, you accepted the work that produced this contract by a 12 to 2 to 1 vote. I would urge all of you to support this contract again tonight by overriding the mayor's veto, or as he said, the pieces of his veto. All parties involved have endeavored to provide a responsible and affordable document that meets the needs of the city, firefighters, and the taxpayers. I urge you to support that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Laura Cahoon.
Laura Cahoon.
Name an address for the record, please.
Laura Cahoon at 30 Greenwood Drive.
Okay.
I'm asking the Board of Aldermen to veto the collective bargaining agreement for the Board of Fire Commissioners of the City of Nashua for the sake of the Nashville taxpayers. While many Nashville taxpayers have lost their jobs and others have taken a pay cut in order to survive this Corona pandemic, Nashville residents want to see their Aldermen put the Nashville taxpayers first for once. I specifically calling out Alderman Kelly, Lars, Tanza, O'Brien, Dow, Clea, and Gathright, who have received contributions ranging between $500 and $1,000 from the Firemen Union for their campaigns. Remember, it is the Nashville taxpayer that have elected them, and it is their job to fight for them and not the unions. Aldermen should have allegiance to the Nashville taxpayers and not the unions. I applaud Alderman Jettie for putting his constituents in front of any money that he has received from the unions and has previously voted, vetoed this contract. It is a clear sign that Alderman Jettie is standing up for the people that voted for him. It is time for our elected Aldermen to stand up for the Nashville taxpayer and veto this contract. It is also shocking that the mayor and the Board of Aldermen would even consider giving an increase of 20% in 2021 and 15% in 2022 on the sewer usage fees for Nashville taxpayers. I do not see how the mayor and the Board of Aldermen can put any more taxes on the backs of the Nashville taxpayers. I find it unbelievable that the mayor and the Board of Aldermen would hit the Nashville taxpayers while so many of them are already down. This increase should be vetoed tonight. If the city cannot run the sewer department within their current budget, then maybe the Nashville taxpayers should get people who can. Also, anyone who blames the state for the loss of financial aid is not taking responsibility because it is the city and the Nashville schools who have not opened the schools. Therefore, parents have no choice but to pull their children out of public schools and put them in private schools. The city of Nashua and the schools within Nashua have total responsibility of the financial aid loss on their shoulders. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the members of the board for allowing me to make comment tonight on the important decision that's before you. The mayors claim that the Board of Fire Commissioners, and I quote, "took over negotiations as an independent board which declined to have the city's finance team participate at all." That claim, at best, is a gross misstatement of fact. At no time during negotiations, both for the original CBA and the current CBA, now the subject of the mayor's veto, did the Board of Fire Commissioners decline... did the Board of Fire Commissioners decline to have the city's finance team participate. Both the legal department and financial services were active participants in all negotiations. To claim otherwise, it is affront to public elected officials, career firefighting management professionals and members of other city departments. In August, shortly after the local and the commission returned to the table, the city negotiating team consisting of Chairman Kevin Burgess, Chief Rhodes, Assistant Chief Walker, Assistant Chief Designate Buxton, City Attorney Dory Clark, and myself, met with the mayor, Kim Kleiner and Cheryl Lindner. The team recognized the mayor's particular concern was with rising healthcare costs, as it was with the Board of Fire Commissioners. And we recognize that moving more members to the high deductible health plan would be helpful in reducing overall healthcare costs. We did remind the mayor that local 789, at the time of the meeting, had the largest percentage of participants of any city bargaining unit in the high deductible plan, approximately 2/3 of the membership. And firefighters were jaded as a result of previous healthcare plan changes where they were unfairly dealt with, a factor which has made it difficult to discuss and bring forward new healthcare plan changes. As that meeting was coming to a close, a proposal aimed at increasing participation was placed on the table. Pardon me. The proposal revolved around increasing union participation in years three and four of the contract through an incentive program. The program would add an additional percentage to base compensation in return for a specified increase in participation. Neither a percentage increase nor a participation plan target were discussed at that meeting. It's believed that this program could make a difference by making the firefighters active marketers of the high deductible plan. The proposal, we believe, was well received by the mayor, and it was his positivity that gave the negotiating team the buy-in we felt was needed to move the proposal forward. In order to continue to attract capable candidates to the fire department and retain our members, we need to offer compensation plans that will do the job. Alderman Jettie, you made a comment at the meeting when this contract was approved that 50K was a great salary for someone just coming out of high school. Alderman Jettie, we don't hire kids coming straight out of high school. Almost all of our new hires have a minimum of an associate's degree. Others have bachelor's degree. They've all been certified by the State of New Hampshire as firefighters, and all have earned and have been certified by the National Registry of Emergency Medical Technicians. Many of them have previous firefighter service or military service. They're not kids straight out of high school. They've earned the compensation they start with. Our firefighters deserve this contract, and I urge you to support them tonight and to override the mayor's veto. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else wishing to give public comment? Alderman.
Just Laurie Ordolano.
Hello, this is public comment. I'm going to call the public first.
Could we have the name and address of the last speaker, please?
I'm sorry. Paul Grant, 163 Harris Road.
Thank you. Did we have someone else?
Yes, Laurie Ordolano.
Laurie Ordolano, you're up.
Yes. 41 Berkeley Street.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to make a comment about the wastewater increase. Um, I'm just concerned that that type of increase really represents crisis management and not planning. And I don't know if there's any type of regulation or ordinance that governs the review of those fees with any regularity. I haven't researched it at all, but it would seem to me that there should be if they're not, because anytime somebody steps in with a 35% increase across two years, I just feel like we missed the mark on planning for this. Um, and in 2022, we have the reevaluation taking place, which I think is going to have a major impact on some of these property owners because there is a decent amount of disproportion that I certainly see, and there's going to be a segment of owners that really get punched in the face. And these fees and everything else that comes down is going to play a role. So I'm, I'm just concerned that there's um, there's no review process of this on a more regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public comment?
Ms. Alderman, Gary Lambert, I would like to. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Alderman Willshire. My name is Gary Lambert. I'm a fire commissioner. My address is 32 Columbia Avenue in Nashua. And I would ask, respectfully ask the alderman to support the contract, override the veto, and I couldn't send it any better than former mayor and Commissioner Davidson and Commissioner Grant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Communications requiring final approval?
There are none.
Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments and elections?
None.
Reports of committees? There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the November 23, 2020 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 1, 2020 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 2, 2020 Finance Committee accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of Resolution R 2086 relative to the acceptance of donated services in the amount of approximately $140,369 for the purpose of providing cellular phone services for law enforcement purposes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, I would like to move for final passage of R 20-086 by roll call, and I would like to speak to it, please.
Alderman Jettie.
So this, uh, this resolution, uh, came about because, uh, in 2018, uh, the police and the, um, other law enforcement people were involved in the seizure of, uh, 26 Sprint cell phones and iPads, uh, which were being used illegally. And, uh, the Sprint company, um, graciously allowed the city to keep those cell phones. Uh, but we didn't have money in the budget to, uh, pay for the telephone service that is necessary in order to use them. But recently, Sprint and T-Mobile merged and created, uh, the Connected Heroes Program, where they are offering a local police, fire and EMS unlimited talk, text and data service. Uh, so we can connect our, the 26 free phones that we got uh, with this free service so that we can now use those 26 phones. The value of this, uh, donation by, uh, by T-Mobile is, uh, over $140,000, and this resolution is just to accept that, uh, that donation.
Thank you, Alderman Jettie. Discussion? Motion before us is for final passage. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 13 yays, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Do I lose my turn because I was late?
Were you here for the discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I've been here the whole time.
Then you can vote.
I would like to vote yea. I just didn't get called.
So that gives us. Thank you. That motion carries. Resolution 2086 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2095, authorizing the expenditure of up to $10,000 from the Conservation Fund on consulting services with the Nashua Regional Planning Commission.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R 20-095 by roll call.
The motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien. Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou. Alderwoman Lou.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
We have 14 yays and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2095 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2096, authorizing a reduction of a $330 variance application fee to widen driveway at 16 Hideaway Road to $50.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R 20096 by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I was contacted by a resident in Ward 2 um, that had gone before the zoning board for a variance. They, uh, were building a two-car garage. Uh, and they encroached a little bit into the side lot. The, uh, the application was approved, and the variance was approved. And afterwards, it was found that, uh, it was never brought up at the meeting, but they, they had another driveway on the other side of the house. It's a corner lot. And found that when they had expanded the driveway for the two-car garage, all of a sudden, they were not in compliance with the width of driveways allowed. So the, no one had evidently taken a look at the lot personally, and, and there was no indication in the zoning board minutes that anyone had looked at it beforehand, and they were told they would have to go back for a second variance. A, if you're applying for two variances initially, it's $380 for the first one, which includes a $50 filing fee. And if you go in for a second variance, it's $200. All of a sudden, th- this was approved, and then they found that they had exceeded the lot, and they were told to have to go back for a second variance. The people that own the property are willing to pay the $50 application fee and go back for the second variance and find out an action taken by the zoning board. But they don't believe they should have to pay an additional $330 back and discuss something that should have been picked up by the city or the zoning board in advance of the first meeting, which I agree to, and, and because as former chair of the CBA, we try to be not overcharge members of the public when, especially when the city has made some type of omission or error. In this instance, uh, they, again, they're willing to pay the, and by the way, the, the zoning department cannot waive fees. No one in city government can waive fees. It's only the Board of Aldermen because the fees are set by ordinance. In this instance, as I said, they're willing to go back and have a rehearing, but they would only want to pay the $50 filing fee, so that's the actual cost to the city of hearing a second variance. And, uh, and I think that this is only fair that, that we waive the $330, allow them to pay the 50, and go back before the zoning board.
I, I'm hoping Tom.
All set, Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 2096. Any further discussion on that motion? Alderman Lou.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I looked into this, um, because there was very, the, the backup was very thin on this particular piece. Um, I think that can, what confuses me, um, I recently dealt with the, um, zoning, the ZBA, and I, I'm not aware of a $50 filing fee, although apparently I'm misinformed, but I do know that with the initial variance, they would have paid the $330. For any additional variance on, on that same application, they would have paid $200. Now, I agree with, um, Alderman Dow that we don't want them to have to pay an additional $330, but I don't see, I, I can't see where a mistake was made. Um, I, I spoke with, uh, the people at City Hall, our staff. Um, their recollection is, was that uh, the applicant had planned to, uh, remove one of the two, uh, driveways. The paperwork in the application that was submitted showed as, as you typically would, showed the final product. And the final product was a house on a corner lot with a single driveway. There weren't two driveways. So that is my understanding why nothing was caught because, um, this was the, this was the presentation. So I'd like to amend the motion, um, the, the resolution rather, to authorize a reduction of a $330 variance application fee to widen a driveway at 16 Hideaway Road to $200. And the reason for that is if, if, if they had understood what variances they needed, then they would have, um, they would have been asked for a check for $530. Any first applicant, uh, variance is 330. The second is an additional 200, the third is an additional 200. So I don't see that they should pay less than any other applicant, but I would, I would agree that they should pay the same and not more. So. But I would, I would agree that they should pay the same and not more. So that's why I'm, um, moving for the, uh, change from fifty dollars to two hundred. Thank you.
The motion is to amend. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, um, I disagree with that because yes, if they had originally picked up on it and had, the city had said, yeah, you, you, you have to apply, if you want to keep that other driveway, you have to pay another two hundred dollars for a second variance. That's fine, but they didn't. And the two driveways are readily visible on the GIS. Um, the people put the plans in for the driveway in the garage because they figured that's what they were getting the variance for. They were unaware, like most people in the city of Nashua are not familiar with those zoning laws. It's, it's, it's pretty complex to begin with. And, uh, they didn't realize that when they expanded the, the, this driveway for the new garage that, that they were going to be in exceeding that. Uh, they are willing to go back, and I have checked with Director Marchand and, and Carter Falk, and the fifty dollars is the notification to the abutters and the, uh, cost, actual cost to the city. So I, I think the fact that, that their approval on this whole project is going to be delayed a couple of months, and the fact that they're going to be dragged back in for, you know, and I, I have no, no idea what the zoning board's going to do. Um, but, uh, whatever they do, I think that these people are willing to live with, but I think that fifty dollars is fair to cover what the city's costs would be to, because this is basically just a continuation of the existing hearing. And, and, uh, because it wasn't caught and, and should have been, I don't see any reason that we should charge them another two hundred dollars.
Further discussion?
A follow-up, please?
Yes, Alderman Lou.
Thank you. Um, I did, uh, uh, research this, and if you look at the city GIS, it doesn't, it does not show the two driveways. Now, um, the applicant hasn't been held up in any way because in fact, the work is done. In fact, the work is done. They're, they're out of conformity. They're non-conforming, and they just need a variance. Now, to, to suggest that the city isn't going to give them a variance, um, doesn't seem plausible. But I just think that they should pay what any applicant would pay in the, in a similar situation.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I have to disagree. I've already checked the GIS and the two are on there. And that was before, that we don't take that, those aerials that often. And it's, it, the one driveway that exists, the one that got expanded is underneath the trees, but you can readily see that it's there. And I also did a drive-by myself to look at it, and yes. So I say, you charge them the fifty dollars to, for the, to cover the cost of the city, go back before the zoning board, find out what the zoning board wants to do, whether they wants to just waive it and say, yes, you can keep that other driveway, or you have to go through the expense of tearing it up. But, uh, I don't agree with charging them another two hundred dollars for the inconvenience.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Madam Chair, can we move the question?
The motion is to move the question. Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
You're on mute, Alderman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
We have twelve yeas and two nays.
And that motion carries. The motion before us is to amend resolution twenty-nine, resolution twenty-dash-ninety-six to replace the fifty dollars with two hundred dollars. Any further discuss, no, no further discussion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Karen.
I'm sorry, no.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
No.
Alderman Mulcher.
No.
We have four yeas and ten nays.
And that motion carries.
Failed.
Failed. My bad. That motion failed. So we're back to the original motion of final passage for resolution twenty ninety-six. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeas and one nay.
And that motion carries. Resolution twenty-dash-ninety-six is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R-2098, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Nashua, New Hampshire, and UAW Local Two Three Two Two Clerical and Technical Unit from July first, twenty twenty, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and authorizing related transfers.
Alderman Clemmons.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would move, um, to, for final passage of R-2098. Or actually, I would, I'm sorry. I'm going to move to amend R-2098 with the language provided by Corporation Council.
Motion is to amend. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Clemmons.
It just briefly, this was just, um, a, this was a piece and, and actually the one coming, uh, next as well. There's both of these amendments. It was language that was, um, left out accidentally, so it's just putting that back in.
The motion is to amend. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
We have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. Uh, now I would move for final passage of R-2098 as amended.
Motion is for final passage as amended. Discussion on that motion.
By roll call.
By roll. Seeing no one, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution twenty-dash-ninety-eight is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of resolution R-2099, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Nashua, New Hampshire, and UAW Local Two Three Two Two Professional Unit from July first, twenty twenty, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and authorizing relating transfers.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to amend R-20-098 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of the amendments made at the Budget Review Committee by roll call. And Madam President, can I speak to my motion?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. As so eloquently stated by Alderman Clemmons, uh, it was discovered at the Budget Review Committee, uh, that there was a little bit of a glitch. Uh, we were able to correct it, and you'll see the changes in the Goldenrod rod. So, uh, I ask for your support. Thank you, Madam President.
The motion is to amend resolution twenty ninety-nine. Further discussion on that motion. Alderman Jettie.
Yes, I would just like to, uh, point out, um, to the Aldermen who were, who were not at or did not see the Budget Review Committee. Uh, these, uh, two glitches, uh, so-called, were caught by Alderman Lou and pointed out by Alderman Lou and, uh, you know, Attorney Clark, um, you know, acknowledged that, that an error had been made, and that's the reason for the, for the correction. So I congratulate Alderman Lou for, um, for reviewing those contracts carefully and catching that. Thank you.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes, sorry.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
I did not record Alderman Lopez president Mulcher, so at the moment I have thirteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Um, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-20-099 as amended by roll call.
The motion is for final passage as amended. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution twenty-dash-ninety-nine is declared duly adopted as amended.
The next item is, um, the mayor's line item veto on provisions of amended R-2088.
Alderman Tanza.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider R-2088 as amended by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Madam President, Madam.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I would like to make a, a true parliamentary inquiry. Uh, and the reason is because the mayor is vetoing this, uh, by line item. And as far, I believe the, the facts presented by corporate counsel, but I'm in fearful depth with the line item veto. I've heard vetoes in the past, vetoing the whole complete contract, but never a line item veto. And I'm very concerned. I cannot support anything that would probably get this automatic board into a court, perhaps maybe before the Public Employees Labor's Relation Board by this line item veto. I never heard it before. It may be one interpretation by corporate counsel, but, uh, I really want, my question is, can I vote? It's not on the contract, which I understand I cannot. But I'm trying to save the city from a possible litigation on the matter. Thank you.
Okay, I would have to defer to Corporation Counsel as to whether or not you can vote on that line item.
I would say that it is a conflict of interest, given your, uh, your family member or members, uh, on the fire department. So Alderman O'Brien, you should not participate in this. Uh, as far as line item veto, it's expressly permitted by the city charter. I have no fear that any court or agency is going to have any problem understanding that at all.
Um, Madam President, may I?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you on, uh, it seems here, the question is not on the collective bargain agreement. The question is on the veto. The collective bargain agreement that is before us has been duly vetted by the Board of Fire Commissions, which is elected, uh, by the, you know, our constituents. It has met approval with the chief and the assistant chief. It then came before, uh, the, uh, Budget Committee and the majority passed it. It did come before the full Board of Aldermen, and it did get passed by the majority. And at that particular time, because of what the city charter says, uh, I basically agree and did not vote. However, this is talking about getting separate into the weeds, and I, and I respectfully respect corporate counsel's, uh, opinion. But when it comes down to this to my fellow Aldermen, I hate the city, the city to get into a lawsuit on the line item veto, and that's why I am concerned. So, uh, I don't think I'm going to win my case here. I understand my obligations and I respect the city charter. But, uh, I think this is going to have ramifications. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome, Alderman O'Brien. The motion is to reconsider resolution twenty-eight. You're welcome, Alderman O'Brien. The motion is to reconsider Resolution twenty eighty-eight as amended. Further discussion. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Abstain.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm sorry. You know what? I apologize. It just occurred to me. Are we voting to? Could you repeat the what we're voting?
We're voting to.
In favor of the veto or?
No, we're voting to reconsider it.
Just to reconsider?
Yes.
Reconsider the previous vote on this contract?
Yes. Well, the mayor's veto. Maybe Corporation Counsel can step in there. I I don't want to give you the wrong information.
Guys, I thought I knew, but.
A yes vote, if it prevails, will cause the resolution to be back before the board with a motion to override the veto in order. A no vote, if that were to prevail, would not allow further consideration of this resolution, and the veto would stand.
Thank you.
Alderman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have ten yeas, three nays, and one abstention.
And that motion carries. Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. Then like to make a motion to override the mayor's veto of R twenty eight-eight as amended by roll call.
Motion is to override the mayor's veto as amended. Further discussion? Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I have gotten very many letters concerning this. Very many people are saying, we love the fire, we love the fire department, we honor their service, they deserve this raise. I've heard that so many times. But I'm also hearing that the one segment that the mayor has pulled out to say this is unfair. Most people are saying that the mayor has this right, that a different option should be made at this point. And I know this is late in the game, and I apologize. I have not been involved in any of the two years' worth of discussion over this. I haven't been involved. I don't even know the history before that, because I know many times the firemen were set aside in favor of trying to deal with something that was urgent. I don't think we should set aside the raises. I think the raises are past due, and I know that there's no way we should ever even look at that part of it. I'm wondering if this part can be set aside and replaced with something at this point. I'd leave this question up to our Corporate Counsel, because I do not know if, at this point in time, we could simply make that change, we could get the firemen what they need now, and we could make sure that the health insurance portion isn't going to continue to beggar us. So may I ask that question of our attorney?
Yes.
If the mayor's veto is allowed to stand, what is vetoed from the contract? Is the provision that puts
Oh my goodness, have we lost him?
I think so.
That was terrible timing.
Not now. Seriously, I need this answer. No.
Sometimes those things happen when you really need to just move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in a really tough spot at this point. My neighbor was Oh, there he is.
There he is. Okay.
If the veto is upheld, what remains of the contract is everything. All of the all of the raises, except those that are contingent upon the percentage of firefighters taking the high deductible plan. That one percent is part of what's vetoed. Also gone is the section that writes into the contract, the three thousand dollar payment for the family or two-person plan, or the fifteen hundred dollar payment toward the single-person high deductible plan. Now, that's in effect and offered aside from the contract, but it is not currently in the expired contract, and the veto would take it out of this contract. What would go into, what would stay is the same situation vis-à-vis health plans, as has been for the last several years, the case. It's the choice between the HMO plan, the POS plan, or the high deductible plan. The cost of living adjustments or annual wage increases, except for those that are contingent on percentage of firefighters taking the high deductible plan. Those wage increases would be there. The firefighters would then have the option, the union would have the option, of accepting that contract as is, or going back and negotiating further. Excuse me. Now, I believe the mayor has indicated that if further negotiations were to take place, he would find acceptable that additional one percent in exchange for the union accepting the plan that makes changes to the HMO copays and deductibles, and puts into the contract the incentive payments for the high deductible plan. So it's a, it's possible that that would be negotiated, and the entire wage increase would be realized. Long explanation, I hope, I've made sense.
It helped, thank you. Someone mentioned a sidebar agreement. Is that something that we could do without having to veto this portion of the contract?
No. But I don't know exactly what it is you're speaking of. What is often referred to as a sidebar agreement, supplementary agreement. When you have a collective bargaining agreement in effect, circumstances arises where you want to deal with a smaller portion of the employer-employee relationship by a separate, usually much smaller and discreet agreement. That's often called a sidebar. At this stage, it is possible for the Board of Aldermen to amend its resolution approving the cost items. So you could approve some of them, all of them. You could state your position that you approve some of them, others you don't approve of in their current form, but you would approve if they were altered in certain ways, and that would, those ways would be up to what you all agreed on. And again, the union would have the option of accepting that or going back and continuing to negotiate.
So at this point, unless we delay this vote until two weeks from now, unless we delay this vote, it is with, stand up for the veto or pass it as it is. That's all, that's those the only choices we have at this point. I can't have any input from the fire union that could tell me that they'd be willing to negotiate something like that.
It would be outside of the normal procedure of this board, but I suppose if the board wanted to hear something from those members of the union, or those union officials which are here, that would be up to the board. As I said, you do have the option of making an amendment to the resolution that you passed and the mayor vetoed in part. I agree with you, or I think I agree with your sense that it would be difficult for you to do that. I also think it's sort of difficult to try and have the Board of Aldermen undertake negotiations with the fire union in this forum.
Thank you.
You're all set, Alderman Schmidt?
No, not really. Would it be possible for someone who was in the negotiating team with the fire union to speak to my question, or is that right out at this point?
Without objection from the board, we could do that. No one objects to that? We could ask. Maybe Chief Rhodes?
Good evening. I think to that question, President Houli is here. And to all due respect to President Houli, he would be best to answer that question. And if you would indulge him a little bit, he was, Thomas has been thrust into this position fairly recently, back in July, so the procedure may be a little off, but I think if you would allow Tom to speak to this, I think he could shed some light on the subject.
Mr. Houli.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board of Aldermen. I hope I can speak on this subject again, if I can just answer the question. Is that what we're looking for?
Yes.
Okay, so it is a cohesive document. This is collective bargaining agreement. So if you shoot down an item at this time, it needs to go back to the table. When it come to a CBA like this, we have members that could have voted on any provision inside that contract. And it doesn't, and we can't say if the majority of our union wanted that incentive or that line item. I've talked to our legal side, our legal attorney. He said it's a cohesive document, like I repeated, and is not divisible by law. We will go back to the bargaining table. I've expressed that that is my concern. I took over as union president in July, and it's now December, and I stand before you, looking to get this contract passed. So that's our stance. The International Association of Firefighters, our third district president, who represents New England, has been touched with Washington, and if they found that this is going on, and we're stepping outside of collective bargaining, which is our right, and then they'll step in too. So I just want to stress that that it's not an option.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. And I would hope, and maybe Corporation Counsel can clarify this. Is this something that we have to vote on tonight, or else the mayor's veto stands? So essentially, if we don't vote on it tonight, this provision will be annexed from the, from the contract right now, correct?
You could table it and take it up at your next meeting.
But it's well, I guess I would be opposed to trying to negotiate directly with the firefighters on this issue. As it was brought up in public comment, they have been negotiating since August of two thousand nineteen on this issue. The firefighters have clearly put a lot of thought into this, because they came up with a plan that they felt worked best for their union. And quite frankly, you know, if their union is, well, you know, our city is the great city that it is because of the employees that we have working for us. The firefighters, as I mentioned earlier, in the past, have had difficulties with concessions that they've made with regard to healthcare. This is not something that was overlooked, I think, by either side. It's something that they negotiated for. I think it would be unfair to them, and I think that they would absolutely go back and have to rethink the entire contract for a third time now if we don't override the mayor's veto. I understand the difficult position that the mayor is in, trying to get all of, and we're all in, quite frankly, because any of the collective bargaining agreements going forward are going to come before us for review. But this contract in particular, because it's been so long, because the firefighters and the fire commission have put a lot of effort and thought into ways that they could try to help reduce healthcare costs while making sure that the unique circumstances of the fire department are cared for and thought of through their healthcare choices. I think we really owe it to them tonight to put this whole process to rest. Unfortunately, you know, they're going to be back before us sooner rather than later, because they're already into year two of this contract. So the fire commission and the firefighters will have to start negotiating again, probably around next year. This is something that can be corrected then, the same time that we'll have to be looking at all the other unions that are coming before us. So I ask that we please override this tonight, and let's move forward and move on to the other business that we have to take care of as a city. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I agree with most of what Alderman Tenza has said, and I would just like to clarify to my fellow Aldermen. I misinterpreted what the original motion was, so I voted exactly opposite of what I intended to. But the motion passed. We're having a discussion, so I'm glad that we're doing that. I think that to Alderman Tenza's point, negotiations have dragged on. I think there is every opportunity for the city's negotiating team and the mayor to make it clear what they were looking for. I think that negotiation is two-way and two-sided. And I believe the fire department has done what they can to try to accommodate what the city's needs are in the context of what our current COVID-nineteen crisis is, and in the context of what they need to do for their firefighters. I think it's important to remember, it was, comments were made earlier in public comment about taxpayers versus firefighters, that firefighters are taxpayers, they are our constituents, and they're struggling with COVID-nineteen as much as anyone else is. We have a number of firefighters who are in isolation because of COVID-nineteen, because they face a higher level of exposure. This is a difficult time for many people financially, but it's also, you know, a higher time of risk for many industries that don't have any alternatives with regards to working from home or taking other other precautions. You're a firefighter, you respond to the fire, you're responding to people who are in need of first aid, you're responding to all manner of crisis, and I think it's important that we recognize that. So as was pointed out earlier, this has dragged on to the point where we can include items of a bargaining point in our next negotiation, but I really think we need to move this forward and recognize what our firefighters have done. I was opposed to it in their initial presentation, because I was concerned about revenue generating and how taxes were being spent. I have attended the budget meetings, and I have been looking at how our spending is taking place. And if there is going to be savings, or if there's going to be cuts made for the to make sure that we don't overload the taxpayers with money, I don't think it needs to come from the firefighters. I think there's other areas we can look, and I think it's important that we do that. The firefighters have negotiated in good faith, city has negotiated in good faith, and I think it's time that we, as Aldermen, continue to do our jobs and uphold the decision that we've already made.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Alderman Cleaver. Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Alderman Cleaver.
Yes, thank you. This is way past due and this is the second time, this is the second contract. It, in my mind, is not divisible. It was negotiated as a package, it should remain as a package. It has strong support from the Board of Fire Commissioners, each member, and a strong support from the union itself, of course. And I think it has strong support from the Board of Aldermen, I hope. And it's time to move it along and give them what they deserve. So I strongly urge my fellow members to override this veto.
Alderman Jenny.
Thank you, Madam President. We've got a couple of things I'd like to talk about. First of all, Commissioner Grant said some things about the mayor and the and the administration, the finance department. You know, that the mayor was misleading us. I understand, I see that Director Kleiner is on the line and she participated in that. I would like to ask her to respond to what Commissioner Grant said.
Director Kleiner, do you wish to respond?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. Mayor Donches, Charlotte Linder, I, Attorney Clark, did attend a session with the Board of Fire Commissioners. The intent of that conversation was strictly to alert the fire commission to our concerns about healthcare. Never during that conversation was there any mention of giving any type of financial consideration for members switching to the high deductible health plan. Back in March, when the city looked at the costs and it was determined that we needed to start to mitigate some of these costs, we developed with our consultants, a very in-depth plan. Looking across the city, looking at all labor groups on how to do that. And clearly, it was decided, considering our consultants' advice, to move forward the redesign on the HMO. And that is the only financial considerations that the city has looked at, and it's with very good reason. It is not the advice of our consultants to offer financial considerations for the high deductible health plan.
Well said, Alderman Jenny.
Yeah, I have another comment. Commissioner Grant also called me out for saying that firefighters that a new firefighter right out of high school could start at 50,000 without any training. And I did say that at the last meeting. And he's right, I was wrong when I said that. Alderman Klee said she thought that firefighters had to be certified. And so after the meeting, I did look into that. I talked to Chief Rhodes. And I found out that I'm not sure about this. I don't think it's a state law that firefighters have to be certified before they start employment, but in fact, in Nashua, Chief Rhodes told me that we, we don't hire anyone who is less than a firefighter certified two. So I, I was mistaken and I apologize for that. I was, I said that based upon the appendix that was attached to the CBA that shows grades of firefighter, you know, starting at grade 100 firefighter. And then firefighter certified number one goes up, goes to the one 111 level. And then firefighter certified number two is at the 200 level, I think, if I remember correctly. So Chief Rhodes told me that we don't hire anybody at less than firefight certified two. So those first two levels of pay on those schedules evidently are not, are not applicable, they're not used. He told me that that a beginning firefighter has to be, has to be certified. And at that level two. But they do start at the lowest grade. So they start at the lowest pay. But after nine months probation, they then they then go to grade 221, which is, you know, the certified two level. So, so they do start a little less than 50,000. But after nine months, they jump up to, if I read the schedules correctly, 53,568. And that's, that's without considering any overtime. The, you know, the statements that that people make, I've heard them from you know, constituents and my fellow Aldermen. You know, who have the opinion that the firefighters deserve every penny. And, you know, that's their opinion, I respect that. But as you know, I'm, as an Alderman, I'm responsible to the taxpayers. And I think I agree that firefighters ought to be paid, you know, an appropriate amount. But I've said, you know, ever since we started talking about these collective bargaining agreements, that, you know, it looks to me like the, that the National Fire Department is among the best paid, if not the best paid, fire department in the area. So, so to think that our firefighters are not being paid fairly, that they're being underpaid. I, you know, as far as I can tell, that's not true. And I've, I've I've invited the firefighters, I've invited the fire commissioners to, to, to get in touch with me and show me that I'm wrong about that. And, and no one has. I did ask CFO Griffin, you know, what, what, what actually are we paying our people? And and according to the information he provided me, the lowest paid firefighter right now is, is getting around, you know, including overtime. And he was getting close to $70,000. That's the lowest man in the fire department. The highest, and you know, I'm not talking about the chiefs, the deputy chiefs, but the highest is 147,862. According to CFO Griffin, the average firefighter, and these are not the lieutenants or the captains, the average firefighter is, is making 86,174. You know, the average captain is making 119,921. You know, I think, I don't think we're underpaying our firefighters. I believe they certainly should be, you know, we should keep up with the times. They're certainly entitled to cost of living increases. But the cost of living increases have been averaging 2% or less over the past five years. In this contract, in addition to, you know, this contract is paying over, you know, over you know, 10%, excuse me, 20, yeah, 10% over four years. So that's, you know, 2.5% average. But something that that I haven't heard a lot of people talk about is built into the collective bargaining agreement are, in addition to the cost of living increases, are increases in the steps. You know, adjustments to the steps in effective July 1st, 2021, there's a 3% increase to the, you know, the steps. You know, these steps are labeled 10, not 15. So people who have 10 to 14 years experience are going to get a 3% increase in addition to the cost of the living increase. And then all the steps above that get, get a 1% increase to make sure that they, all the steps stay 1% above the lower, lower step. So, you know, built into this thing are, in addition to cost of living increases, adjustments to the steps. So I, you know, I, you know, everybody's entitled to their own opinion and I respect everybody else's opinion. But as far as I can tell, our firefighters are all, are well-paid. They deserve to keep up with the times, they deserve to get a cost of living increase. But I don't think we can afford these other increases. And certainly for them to get in addition to all of that, you know, additional increases for converting to the high deductible plan, you know, seems inappropriate. And I've heard some people say that they, you know, that their that their HMOs should not be taken away from them. I don't think that any of these proposals for any of these unions are talking about taking away the point of service plans or the HMO plans. There's some adjustment to it. But what the city is trying to do is, is incentivize people to convert to the high deductible plan. And that incentive is, you know, by paying them, you know, you know, the, the increased amounts that Director Kleiner has explained to us, which you know, goes into their healthcare savings plan. So I apologize for the length of my remarks. I apologize to the people who who disagree with me on this. And, you know, I respect your opinions and, but I, I am going to vote to sustain the mayor's veto.
Alderman Tenza.
Madam President, just I guess a point of order, if we could. The mayor's veto only pertains to the clause regarding the healthcare. I don't think it uses any of us to relitigate this whole thing and talk about the wages. I respect Attorney Jettie's, Alderman Jettie's opinion. He stated it, and I think we all understand it. But going forward, I think it may make sense if we can focus debate on the issue of healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gaffrey.
I just want to say, I thank former Mayor Donaldson David for being here and giving us a little history. The fire department and many contracts has come before the city of Nashville, even before our time. Because most of us are fairly new to the board within the last, I guess, four years anyway. So I appreciate that and I appreciate the conversation from Paul as well. I am going to vote for this contract. I do believe not necessarily that it's deserved. But I have seen and heard so many conversations where the contracts are always failing. They're always behind two, three years or something of that nature. That should never happen, especially if you're working with your union representative, you know, to help work those things out. And I did get, again, an opportunity to speak to Mr. Houli for, is it Houli or Houli?
Houli.
Houli, okay. I did get the opportunity to speak to him for a while and I really appreciate the conversation that we had. And so I am going to vote for the contract to undo the veto.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Dow.
Yes, I just want to bring up a couple of random points just for historical. And the contract before this one that the firemen signed up to, they took a healthcare concession and took one year of zero increases. And then the city offered another large bargaining unit, something completely different. And that's why they're hesitant to be the first one out of the chute on this health plan. As was stated, they will be probably committed to this health plan on their next contract. This health plan change came well after the contract negotiations started. So we are asking them to change course. Also, when they came before us the first time, we did not approve the contract. And the Budget Committee and the Board of Aldermen asked them to reduce the impact to FY19 and FY20 or 20 and 21 because of the funding issue. They came before us after the first year of the contract had already passed and we would have had to go find money to put back in that budget. And there was a certain amount of money put forward for negotiations in this year's budget. And the way the contract's written right now, those first two years of the contract aren't increasing any additional spending. The city, that money is in contingent. It's already there. And they did a good job in that. And, and when they did that, because I voted against it the first time, I committed that, okay, you've done what we asked you to do. And I said I'd support them and I'm not going to change my word on that. I am going to support them. I would prefer at some point, if they want to do a sidebar later and, you know, switch the wording and take the, the health plan possibly after one of the other large unions already signs up. And I think we can save some money. 22 is going to be the, the bad year. And it's driven predominantly by the state, no matter what anybody says. If you look at the numbers, it's the state that's, that's spending money and putting it down on property taxes. And all the cities and towns, especially in the southern tier, they've all said that lately. And the municipal associations also saying, hey, you can't keep doing that. There, and I'm not going to go into each one of them because I know that in 22, the school numbers will change because with the vaccine now, all of those students will be back. The free and reduced lunch will go up again. And we won't get hit with a $6 million issue. The 16% in the next year of the cost of this contract is the additional monies demanded by the state for pensions. For the people who might not know it, the state pension plan, I reiterate, the state pension plan pays zero towards pensions, including their own people. They started at paying 35%. And they worked their way down and they went to zero. This $4 million increase is because they don't feel they're going to earn the interest that they had been earning in the past. I find it hard to believe with the stock market being higher than it's ever been, but I think at some point, we need to have those people back in front of us from the pension board and find out what's going on. But I'm not going to hold the state sending all these bills down to us against the firefighters. They risk their lives on a daily basis. So do the police. But, but the firemen probably have more fires and drastic police action. And you know, the chemicals that get used in fires, the things that are burning in the fires, are health hazards for them. It's, 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 you know, and we always remarked from nine and we always remarked from nine 11, the, the firemen are the people that are running into the fire building, not out. So if you average the last eight years, including this contract and the one before, the actual raises are reasonable for the, for the work that they do and the professionalism they show and, and, uh, the numbers of lives that they've saved. They also stepped up to the plate on, on safe stations and got nothing for it. And they were dealing with people that had drug problems. And we didn't pay them anything for that. And they weren't asking for it, but it's something to consider when you're asked, when they're negotiating their new contract. So I am going to vote to override the veto. Uh, I hope that at some point before the next contract, we can get them on board with a, with a regular health plan, but we're in a box right now and that's where we're at. Thank you.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. I just want to point out that I believe that Mayor Donchus is pointing out an obviously really poor policy in the increasing, giving a step increase or whatever you want to call it. If, if the department, um, you know, has 70% on buy-in. He's exactly right. We're incentivizing them to get 70% buy-in for two years so that they can enjoy a 1% raise in salary and pension until they retire. It, it's not good for the city. It, it, it is very poor finance for the, for the city of Nashua. I also don't think it's good policy because your choice among the three choices, the healthcare choices, is very personal. It, it, it's very individual. It depends on, a high deductible health plan is not for everyone. It's not a good choice for everyone, but you're going to have, um, peers, uh, putting pressure among themselves to get that percentage in there. And that's not what we want to do with people making their choices, their healthcare choices. So I think it's financially and as a policy, a really bad element of this contract and I support the mayor for that reason. Thank you.
Further discussion on this? Motion to override the mayor's veto.
Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, Alderman Schmidt. I, I wasn't sure who it was.
Um, at this point, people asking me to, um, agree with the mayor, many people asking me to agree with the mayor, not to not pay a raise to these wonderful people who take care of us. They saved my neighbor's life one day. I was here. I watched it. It was amazing. That's not the point. The point is healthcare, healthcare insurance. I, I would ask if we could table this and I can have two weeks to, to see what I can understand in this. Um, so I, I move, I move to table.
Motion is to table. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I think I have to abstain.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Dow.
No.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
No.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
No.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
No.
Alderman Molshear.
No.
You have three A's, 10 A's and one abstention.
And that motion fails. Motion before us is to override the mayor's veto as amended. Further discussion on that motion? Alderman Dow.
Yes, I just want to make sure that, that the motion is articulated and is clear with what we're voting on so that everybody's clear on which way to go.
Okay. So a yes vote would be to override the mayor's veto. A no vote would be to go along with the mayor's veto.
Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Brian.
Sorry, excuse me. I didn't see you, Alderman Kelly.
That's okay. Um, sorry about that. I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to, uh, say that I am going to vote to override the mayor's veto here. I think that the firefighters have negotiated in good faith multiple times. We've asked them to go back and look at it the last time, um, in terms of affordability and they did that. And I think we need to move this forward. I also had a conversation, uh, with, um, President Houli and not only are, you know, our actions important from a perspective of the city and being fiscal responsible, but also morale for our firefighters. Letting them know that, that we do support the, the good work that they do and that their union is, is doing appropriate negotiating on their behalf. So it's time to move this forward. And I know a lot of people have said the same things, but I just wanted to make sure I waited. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate the same, uh, message that Alderwoman Kelly, uh, just expressed. I agree 100%.
As do I. Anything further? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I'm saying.
Alderwoman Kelly.
A yes would be to override the veto and no.
Yes, to override the veto. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Lopez.
I said yes very loudly and affirmatively while I was muted.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Molshear.
Yes.
You have 10 A's, three A's and one abstention.
And that motion carries. The veto for Resolution 2088 as amended is declared overridden. And Resolution 20-88 as amended is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
There are none.
New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R2100 relative to the rescinding of authorized unissued debt.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dow, Alderman O'Brien. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R2101, authorizing release of certain pedestrian walkway easements.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Harriet Gathright. Alderman Cleaver. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance O2040, increasing sewer use fees, rates and charges.
Additional sponsors? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee and the Nashville City Planning Board.
First reading of resolution, uh, excuse me, first reading of ordinance O2041, amending the administrative officer ordinance.
Additional sponsors? I will, given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for general public comment.
Um, I'd like to comment. It's Beth Scare. I'd like to comment.
Okay.
Um, hi, um, I was just wanted to.
Can we get your address for the record, please?
Yeah, 111 East Hobart Street.
Thank you.
And I, I just wanted to talk again about my, uh, Save Women's Sports flag. Alderman Jan Schmidt and Mayor Donchus had it removed from the citizen flagpole. And I wanted to remind everyone that this is an important issue, that everyone should understand that women's sports are being taken away. Men are being allowed to compete. And, uh, the mayor and Alderman Schmidt support this effort to, um, take away women's sports. Um, when Olympics come next year, you'll see it firsthand, up close. Much bigger, stronger men competing in women's sports, taking away their awards. And, um, you can visit savewomensports.com to learn more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public comment?
Hi, I would like to speak. Hi.
Hi, name and, name and address for the record, please.
Geobonia, 5 Hopi Drive. And I'm also the Director of Events and Partnerships at Boston Builder Club and Casino. So I appreciate everybody's time. I actually want to speak on something not on your agenda today, but I think it might come up soon. Tomorrow, the Board of Health will have a meeting about a possible curfew. And it is very concerning to us as a business, to all of Nashville hospitality businesses. I think it would be very detrimental to infiltrate a curfew. I think more of our local businesses will close. I think to try to handle it on a city level opposed to state, I mean, people will just drive to Manchester. Um, we'll lose a lot of business. We are a charitable gaming operation as well. So we have organizations like the Nashville Fire Relief, the Family Promise of Greater Nashua. The Nashville Police Patrolman is coming up to benefit this month. And unfortunately, these people aren't going to come and play with us knowing that there's this deadline. They're going to go to Salem. They're going to go to Manchester. I even think our local residents would go elsewhere and still come back home. So I struggle to see how it would slow the spread of the coronavirus. We have done everything possible at our own location to do the right thing, where we're limiting people at the bar. We hire details. We implement all of these things. I'm ordering thousands upon thousands of dollars of PPP equipment that we supply to everybody. And it just seems like maybe some places aren't doing that extreme. I just don't want to be lumped into that same group. This is my livelihood. I've worked at Boston Builder Club and Casino for 16 years. I started as a server. I worked my way up. It's a family-run business. And I feel for all the other businesses. I see them closing. And I just think it would be a huge mistake and then, you know, it would hurt our neighbors, our local businesses. And I just hope that we'll have the Aldermen's support regardless of the recommendation of the Nashville Board of Health, um, in this matter. I also want to commend the Aldermen on what you guys decided to do, um, when we reopened and, and expanding outdoor dining. I mean, you saved a lot of local businesses. I just would hate to see it be for, for nothing if they close because it's winter and the times are difficult. I mean, I understand holding people accountable and everybody needs to abide by the restrictions and uphold the rules. I just hate to lump everybody into one lump together and all of us suffer. Never mind the fact that, you know, for us, this would hurt our local nonprofits. It would hurt us. I estimate most restaurants and bars from research have 15% of their sales are after 9:00 PM. And that might not seem like a big number. However, in this in this climate that we live in now, that is life or death. And so I'm really, really hoping that this doesn't come to be, this doesn't come to fruition and that we have a curfew as the only place in New Hampshire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to give public comment? Well, Chief Rhodes.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the Honorable Board. I, I just want to, um, express thanks from Chief Buxton and I for your support of your firefighters. Because they're your firefighters and they do an incredible job for our community every day. And, um, knowing that you have their backs is, is going to go a long way. So again, I just wanted to thank you very much for your support.
Anyone else want to give public comment? Okay, seeing none, remarks by members of board. Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank everybody. I wanted to thank the 10 people that voted, uh, to, um, override the veto. I think it was the right thing to do. I wish there was a better way to do it, but I am so glad that the contract has gone through for the fire department. Thank you very much.
Anyone else public comment? I mean, uh, remarks by Alderman. Alderman Lopez.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to remind the public, um, that we are far from out of the woods with, with COVID-19. Um, while we do have a vaccine that is being approved by the FDA and is in the process of being, uh, reviewed for, for longer term effects, it's not going to stop people from spreading COVID-19. Um, it's not going to be immediately available. We do not have any COVID-19 vaccine in Nashville, New Hampshire right now. And we will not have them for Christmas. We will not have them for New Year's. So, um, I do think we need to maintain our guard. I think that the results of how well each of us are doing that individually speaks for itself with the infection rate, with the outbreak rate. The state, uh, recently released, uh, a positive test number of a thousand people, um, in a day. And that was really an aggregate of, of the last uh, two days, but it was basically because there was such a flood of positive tests, they had trouble tracking and reporting it all. Um, I know we are definitely as a state in the top five for infection rates for the entire country. We're losing ground in terms of what we put into place in, in April and in May and in June, um, in safeguarding people's lives. And we've started to see people in long-term care facilities die again. We're starting to see our hospitals over utilize their, their, um, their ICU capacity and, and start to expand into other areas and other wards. Um, I know that the state hospital, uh, has already exceeded its, its isolation capacity and is spreading into other programs too. And I know that we, we still have a large number of people that are, um, just not understanding the concept of what masks are for, why we need them, how important they are. And they are unfortunately, um, dictating much of the terms of what's happening because when they show up at a Thanksgiving dinner, you don't want to turn them away. When you have, uh, they argue with you, oh, you know, as, as family members over, um, whether or not you believe in them or you're not, each, each chip that they, they make erodes your confidence in basically the invisible strategy to prevent an invisible threat. The threat becomes real when it's too late and way too many people have found themselves suffering in an ICU bed with their family members with regrets. And they've tried to pass that message on to us. I think we need to hear it. So I appreciate Gia's comments. Um, I appreciate the support that Boston Billiards gave, has given in the past to nonprofits, um, particularly some that I've been involved with. Um, but I also think that I'm personally not going to. ignore what the health department says, especially before they even said it. Tomorrow, there's a meeting for them to vet it. They had the opportunity to just make a, an edict and hand it down to us. And they specifically wanted to be sensitive to businesses and make sure that it wasn't being done in a, in a way that did more harm than good. I trust that as, as medical professionals, they're going to do whatever, uh, they feel is necessary to provide a data-driven and appropriate response, and I think they deserve to be given a fair opportunity to do that, given that that's what their role is for the city, and given that much of where we are today in December, it's because we weren't listening collectively to public health professionals back in February, back in March, back in April. Um, so I, I empathize with all the people who are struggling. Um, I work with a lot of the people who are struggling and have for years. Um, but I also recognize the, the other impacts and the other forces at work here, and I want to see what the health, um, the Board of Health has to say. I want to see what their suggestions are, and I want to make sure that Nashwans are safe long enough for us to get access to the vaccine and stabilize this, this outbreak situation. Um, I'd love to go back to where we were, uh, this time last year, where we had people celebrating, uh, together and, and supporting charities and focus more on being generous rather than acting out of necessity, but we're not there yet. And so I think we all have to be very careful over the next couple of weeks, very thoughtful of others. And if there are other ways that we need to be helping the business community, ways that are not traditional, um, I think we need to pursue those. Um, we, we looked outside of the box in terms of the, um, the business, uh, businesses on Main Street and expanding outdoor dining. I think we may need to look at some kind of business relief support. Um, we may even need to look at how city welfare recognizes the crisis and disperses the COVID funds. Um, I think it's a conversation we should have, but I don't think we should be undermining the public health recommendations. I think the line for where we're negotiating should be way further, uh, to the side of people being safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly.
I'm sorry, could I respond to?
This is only remarks by Alderman. At this point, public comment is done. Sorry.
Okay.
Alderman Kelly.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Willshire. Alderman Lopez said a lot of what I normally, um, want to say around COVID. I know that everyone's tired and we're going into the holidays. And I just urge everyone to sort of look at what's ahead. Uh, the vaccine's on the horizon and, you know, one, one holiday, um, at home with just your family um, is, is definitely, I know that's what I'm going to do at Thanksgiving, and it wasn't so bad. We had Zoom open all day, so. Um, so I just encourage people to just hold the line. Um, but I, the other point I was going to make is that as you're thinking about holidays, if it's something that you celebrate and you're looking to, um, get gifts, uh, the downtown businesses are open, they're small, you're not going to stand in line at the mall, um, and they all really, really uh, rely on, on the community to come out for them. So if you're able to, um, and you can wear a mask and come downtown, we have a lot of really great um, businesses down there that can help you. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tenzel.
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, the, uh, Jewish celebration of Hanukkah begins in, in a few days, uh, before we'll, we'll meet again. So I just wanted to wish all of our friends and neighbors who are celebrating, uh, a happy and safe Hanukkah. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I just want to, um, I just want to, uh, thank Gia for coming forward, uh, this evening and speaking. Um, her comments reflect a lot of the business communities', um, comments that I have gotten. And, um, you know, and, and really the issue to me, uh, and to them, i- is about being responsible, following the governor's, um, protocols, following the Nashua ordinances, the mask ordinance. Um, and where the city is lacking, uh, I believe, is an enforcement. Um, and we have a lot of work to do in that area. Um, it is a lot harder to, um, I, I knew that this was going to be an impossible task to enforce this with the resources that, that we currently have. And so, uh, where we are, um, getting into a worse situation than we were in in the spring, I think it's incumbent upon us to have the conversations that, um, Alderman Lopez was talking about, um, because yes, we need to listen to our health, uh, experts. I absolutely agree a hundred percent with that. On the other hand, um, we need to listen to local businesses and we need to understand the financial impact that it's going to have, uh, that, that shutting down will have on a business and what that's going to do to the employees and the long-term stability, uh, of the community at whole. Um, and it's not about putting economics above health. What it's about is the fact that in the spring, when the state went for a shutdown, we had Congress that was working with the American people and working with the states to get us things like, uh, the PPE loans, um, the PPP loans and helping, um, with a stimulus check and helping with the six hundred dollars extra in unemployment. So that people had the stability, people could, could stay at home and they could, um, social distance in a responsible way. We put moratoriums on, on evictions and on, um, you know, getting people's utilities, uh, taken away from them. We, you know, we don't have any of that in place right now. All of that is gone at the end of, at the end of this month. And so, you know, we can't simply say that we're going to just make a policy, a blanket policy across the city and expect that it's not going to have drastic financial implications to certain people. Um, so we have to find a better way to do that. Um, I'm all for, um, sitting down at the table and trying to figure that out. Um, but I know this, that no plan to shut down, uh, the city for any period of time without a plan that backs up that with funds, with money, with economics, i- is going to be a viable plan. Um, it's, it's going to be only to the detriment of this city and its citizens and its workers. And so, um, what I would, what I would hope that the approach is moving forward is enforcement so that when people go out and they see a business, and I've been to them and I don't go back. When I see a business where there's people shoulder to shoulder all the way down at a bar, for example, or I walk into the mall and there are plenty of people walking around without, um, a mask on, and that's our ordinance. Now, I voted against that ordinance, but we should, we, we need to support that ordinance. That's a law. So we need to have enforcement. So I've always supported social distancing. I've always said that we need to make sure restaurants are adhering to the government's, uh, and to the governor's guidelines, um, and some of them are not. Uh, and the ones that aren't should be fined, uh, at least warned and then fined and fined again and fined again until you figure it out, or the health department should shut them down. I mean, how many times does, does it take for someone to violate a, a different health rule before the, the health board shuts them down? That's the kind of approach that we need to take. It's a scalpel approach. It's a approach where it is, let's go in, get the offenders, and change the behavior. But let's recognize that there are people who are following the guideline, the guidelines, um, that were put in place by the governor and put in place by this city. And let's recognize that they're following their rules and we shouldn't do things to them to the detriment of the entire city. So that's my point on that. Um, I'm looking forward to the Board of Health meeting. I'm hoping that I can get there. It's tough for me sometimes because it's in the middle of the day. Um, but, you know, the, these would be the things that I hope comes out of that discussion. And on a cheerier note, happy Hanukkah, everybody. I know that's coming up and, uh, hopefully, we will, um, have, uh, and we'll have another meeting and I can wish everybody a Merry Christmas at that point. So, thank you so much.
Alderman Dow.
Yeah, just, just two quick, quick things. One, um, if we have to address, if we have to address something coming from the Board of Health or the curfew, we got to be very careful about how that's imposed. Um, but the other thing I want to say is that when we vote on things here at the Board of Alderman level, uh, there's a lot of information that comes to us that unless you follow the committee meetings and the inputs and the minutes, uh, are, could be difficult for people to understand where we're coming from. So I would suggest that, uh, people try to, uh, get knowledgeable on a subject before they condemn any action or, or even support any action, you know, that they, uh, try to know as much as they can about the subjects. So that's all I had.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Earlier in the public comment, uh, I was kind of called out. Several other Aldermen were, uh, you know, receiving support, financial support on the elections from the firefighters. But everybody knows with my son on the fire department and by city charter rule as it stands right now, uh, I cannot vote, so it didn't affect my vote. And I want that to be, uh, duly noted. But however, elections do have consequences, and ten years ago, there was one majority in the New Hampshire State House, and they did run ripshot, and it affected the, uh, the pension system to which Nashville's liability is over two million dollars. Two million dollars is the cutoff point that raises the tax rate one percent, and we've been paying that since for ten years. Also too, the New Hampshire retirement system estimated, as Alderman Dow brought up, uh, a return on investments of six percent. What we received was one point three percent. That's an issue. In baseball, they fire their managers. Maybe we ought to look at the New Hampshire retirement system very much closely and find out who's managing it, because the people who are managing it, they kind of counteracted the employees who were running it and put in these financial gurus, one point three percent. Like Alderman Dow said, the stock market was doing good at that particular time is extremely disappointing. So therefore, I am proud to say, for my mega hundred dollars a year state salary for being on, and I share that with my other friends who had served or are now serving in the New Hampshire house. Uh, I have introduced two bills on the behalf of Nashua, and I'm proud to say, working with the mayor's office, Cheryl Lynder too, and putting at least part of it back, the fifty percent back, that would help alleviate the cost. Also, going to that radical, uh, pay off a hundred percent of the pension system, uh, from twenty thirty-nine to twenty forty-four and adjusting the municipalities', uh, contributions to that will be a great savings to the, the city. And I hope when people look at this, this was a one-sided legislature in the past that came down. And when we get down to it, we shouldn't take what that group did and beat up our police, our firefighters and our teachers or anybody else by what that legis- legislator did. It's going to take us a lot of years to get out from that callous behavior, but we're in the right direction. And I'm happy to work with the mayor and his office on it. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Kleber.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just, uh, very quickly, it's been covered already, but way too many people are not wearing masks. And I see it on the street, I see it elsewhere, in particular in the Roby Park sledding area. Large numbers of people closely, uh, packed, no masks. And it's got, despite the city ordinance, despite the state mandate, people are not wearing masks. It's the worst possible thing. And we see it in the numbers of increased COVID, uh, infections. So I urge everybody to wear masks, do, do the thing, stay distant and, and do your best because it affects all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The Attorney Bolton.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam President. Uh, my normal rule at these meetings is, uh, to speak only when spoken to. Uh, so, uh, thank you for your indulgence this evening.
You're welcome.
Uh, last week, uh, Nashville lost an individual who devoted major portion of his life to service to our city. Uh, back in the early seventies, Phil Howarth served the city as a member of the Board of Assessors. Uh, in seventy-four, he was appointed and became our first full-time corporation counsel. And he spent ten years in that role, uh, serving the city, uh, very admirably and, uh, in a very dedicated manner. And he was then appointed to the Nashville District Court bench where he served for another twenty years. Um, retiring, uh, in, uh, oh, four approximately. Uh, I had the good fortune as a young lawyer to work as Phil's deputy here in Nashville from eighty-two to eighty-four. And, uh, I will tell you, you are still getting service from Phil Howard because, uh, daily, uh, we benefit from the lessons I learned working for him. So I know you'll join me in wishing condolences to his wife Anne, their children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, Attorney Bolton. Um, Alderman Jenny.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, so during the, during my, my research regarding the fireman's contract, when I looked at, um, fire commissioners, minutes of the fire commissioners meeting, meetings, and, uh, I discovered, um, you know, as we all did tonight, that Commissioner Davidson, uh, had resigned, uh, as a commissioner back in, uh, September. And, uh, I don't know about everyone else, but I was, um, surprised to hear that. I don't know if I'm, if I just missed, missed that news, but it, it came as news to me. And, and I just want to thank him for his service to the city. I remember when he was an Alderman, um, and, uh, served as, um, mayor. He was, uh, I think on the Airport Authority and, uh, in his, in his fire commissioner. And, uh, so, you know, I think for most of his, um, life, he is, uh, he is devoted it to public service, uh, for the city and I, and I, I, I think he's, he's left the meeting now, but I wanted to thank him, uh, publicly. And I also learned that, uh, the fire commissioners elected, um, Attorney Gary Lambert to, uh, replace him as a fire commissioner. And I wanted to congratulate, um, Attorney Lambert. Um, I think he's a, you know, he's certainly a, uh, a, 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 uh, an outstanding individual and, uh, you know, provided great service, um, and continues to provide great service as a Marine and, uh, a great lawyer and, uh, and otherwise, uh, to the city. He was, you know, in the legislature, uh, I can't remember if he was in the Senate, but I know, you know, he ran for, um, for higher office, um, and didn't make it, but, uh, but he's, he's a great choice. Uh, that being said, um, I don't think when we, um, amended the ordinances, uh, in the charter to, uh, provide, to eliminate, uh, special elections to replace individuals, uh, you know, the purpose was to, to, uh, save money and, uh, you know, an acknowledgement to uh save money and uh, you know, and acknowledgement that those special elections, that, you know, people just didn't come out and and vote in them. But I don't think we anticipated that uh that boards would not um be more public in their selection. You know, the or, the charter now provides that boards can elect their own uh, you know, replacements, um, you know, which is fine. But I I I would hope that in the future, you know, whether it's the Fire Commission or any other board, if if they're coming to fill a vacancy, that they would do it in a much more public way, advertise that the position is open, you know, seek uh people who might be interested to make known their interest and uh, you know, you know, hopefully have a a large select pool to to choose from, interview people and and choose the best candidate. I think if if all that had been done, um Attorney Lambert would probably have been, have selected anyway. I think he's a great choice. But I I I just wanted to say that um, you know, I hope in the future that boards um, you know, keep that in mind, that, you know, we've taken the people's right to elect their replacements, you know, on a short-term basis, you know, to fill a vacancy. But we should be cognizant of that and uh and make it a much more public um process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one. Um, I I wanted to chime in about the Public Health Department and what great support they've been throughout this pandemic. They work hard, they work long hours, uh, they they have been fantastic. So I I just wanted to uh give them a shout out. Committee announcements. Alderman Dow.
Yes, tomorrow night, budget, seven o'clock. And um then next Thursday, Joint Special School Building Committee.
Anyone else? Alderman Tenza.
I'd just like to announce that next Tuesday, December fifteenth, there will be no P E D C meeting, we have no legislation and no other presentations, so uh giving everyone the night off. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the December eighth, twenty twenty, meeting of the Board of Alderman Alderman be adjourned by roll call.
The motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Cle, uh, excuse me, Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
Motion carries and we are adjourned at ten oh three P M. Thank you, everyone.